Are we ready, Ms. Conneke? Are we recording? Okay, very good. I'll call a meeting to order. Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll?
All right, Ms. Chick.
I don't think she heard you.
Ms. Chick? I see your presence, so I'll continue on. Mr. Dwyer?
Present.
Mr. Quinto?
Present, thank you.
Ms. Infante?
President, Northfield Township.
Yes, Mr. Gustafson?
President, Northfield Township.
Mr. Roman?
I'm here, Northfield Township.
And Zarzaki, President, Northfield Township. Everybody is present.
Thank you. Make a motion. We adopt the agenda.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed? Ayes have it. First call to the public, Ms. Conneke.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we will have our first call to the public for items on the agenda. Should a member of the public wish to speak at this time, please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. When I acknowledge you, I'll unmute you. And you will have three minutes to give your comments for Planning Commission. Please also state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment on agenda items at this time? Okay, I thought I saw a hand, but it looks like it went down, so no comments at this time, Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have to switch computers. I can't hear anybody.
Are you good now? Can you hear us now, Janet?
Obviously not.
Okay. We'll continue on, since there's no one spoke, a call to the public, there's no clarifications from commissioners, no correspondence that I know of. There's no public hearings tonight. We'll go reports to committees. We'll try Ms. Chick, or we can come back to Ms. Chick at the end. There's no ZBA report, as we don't have a representative present. Anything from staff, Ms. Burke?
None, thank you.
Thank you. Planning consultant report, Ms. Conneke.
Yep, Chair, I just have a few things. So I wanted to follow up on our discussion at the last meeting about the amendments to the zoning ordinance that we brought forward regarding code enforcement issues. We have made all the changes recommended by the Planning Commission and put that in an ordinance format and forwarded it to the township attorney for review. We've also asked for his input on definitions that may be provided or whether they're covered as legal terms of art, as well as whether a couple of other sections that mention things like dangerous buildings. There's, I believe, a property maintenance code and then municipal civil infractions code. So I've also kind of cited those and flagged them as, you know, are these, as I interpret them, sufficiently authorizing the code enforcement officers and others to enforce not just the zoning ordinance, but all aspects of the ordinance. And then, just to give the Planning Commission a heads up, I know we've had a couple of quiet meetings, but we do have applications that we're working through to get revisions and adequate plans in front of the Planning Commission for review, which we expect soon. We also have a fairly large project that we just got an application in for that's going to require, I think, a couple of different moving parts. So I'll try to keep you up to date on our progress as I work through that with not just staff, but the applicant as well, just so that you're primed. It's going to be, I think, a nice challenge for the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. Parks and Recreation Report, Mr. Iquinto.
Yes, sir. We have a meeting tomorrow via Zoom. If anyone would like an invitation, please reach out to Jennifer Carlisle, and we'd love to have you. They are open to the public. And we have them every single month right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Downtown Planning Group Report, Ms. Infante.
Nothing has been met, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to Ms. Chick. Board of Trustees Report.
The board met January 12th. Board representative appointments were reaffirmed. Appointments to other boards and committees were made. John Zarzaki was appointed to the planning, reappointed to the Planning Commission. And Scott Gustafson is a new appointment to the Planning Commission. Congratulations and welcome to both. The Peoples Express contract was renewed. Writership for Peoples Express continues to increase, and they continue to serve our community well. Al Dente Pasta is looking to increase their footprint in Whitmore Lake and is proposing purchasing half an acre north of North Village property behind their business. Formal proposal to purchase is expected to be forthcoming. We received information that La Bonia Builders is still interested in working with the township to develop housing in the back of the North Village property. And the board listened to a presentation from Natalie Bond of McKenna on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. With the adoption of that master plan, the township can apply for DNR grants and others for the benefit of our parks.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Moving on, we have no unfinished business. Go to new business. A, congratulations, Mr. Zarzaki, for reappointment. Do you have anything you'd like to say tonight?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Item B, new member, Planning Commissioner Scott Gustafson, appointed for a three-year term also. Welcome, Scott. And would you like to say anything tonight?
Yeah, I'm an architect. I was previously on the zoning board of appeals for the last two years or so. And, you know, really enjoyed the opportunity to serve the township in that role. And then I learned there was an opening on the Planning Commission and thought it might be another way to to apply my professional skills to the benefit of the community. In addition, I serve on the Michigan State Board of Architects. I'm the chair. And I'm a member of the Swedish-American Chamber of Commerce in Detroit. And, yeah, just excited to meet all of you and to work with the township to make improvements where we live.
Thank you very much and welcome. And we'll go to the next item of business, it's the election of officers. And what I'll do is, we'll go through each position, ask for any nominations. They need to be seconded. We'll go through each position first, then we'll go back and ask if the people that are nominated are, accept the nominations, and we'll see what we have after that. And perhaps, to make it easy, if we could vote on its entirety, I don't know if that'll be the case. It's not always the case, but that's how I'd like to approach it. So is there any nominations for Chair?
I nominate Roman for Chair.
I'll support.
Nomination by Mr. Iquinto, supported by Ms. Chick. Any others? No others. I would like to go to Vice Chair. I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Chick for Vice Chair.
Second.
Supported by Ms. Infante. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, we'll go on to Secretary. I would nominate Mr. John Zarzaki for Secretary. Support, supported by Mr. Iquinto. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll go to Zoning Board of Appeals Representative. I would like to nominate Mr. Dwyer.
I'll support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Are there any other nominations? I don't see any. Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Representative, I would nominate Mr. Iquinto.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Infante. Any other nominations for that? Seeing none, we'll go to Downtown Planning Group Representative. I nominate Ms. Infante.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick. Are there any other nominations for that? Seeing none, we'll go through and verify the nominations. I would accept nomination for Chair. Ms. Chick, do you accept nomination for Vice Chair?
I do, thank you.
Mr. Zarzaki, do you accept nomination for Secretary?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Mr. Dwyer, do you accept nomination as ZBA Representative?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Iquinto, you accept nomination as Parks and Recreation Representative?
Yes, sir, thank you.
And Downtown Planning Group, Ms. Infante, do you accept nomination Downtown Planning Group Representative?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, that makes it easy. Thank you. So with that, I would make a motion, and I'll go through each one again if I have to make motion that appointments, or, excuse me, elections for Chair be myself, Vice Chair Ms. Chick, Secretary Mr. Zarzaki, ZBA Representative Mr. Dwyer, Parks and Recreation Mr. Iquinto, Downtown Planning Group Ms. Infante, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Chick, I believe?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll do roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Quinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes. Passes, seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So next item is item 10D, Parks and Recreation Plan Presentation, Ms. Conneke.
Thank you, Chair. Natalie Bond from our office is actually going to present on this. I just promoted her to panelist, so it's like she'll be all set shortly. There we go. Thanks. All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Commissioners. So tonight, I'm going to give a presentation on where we're at with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We are nearing the end of the road soon. And the purpose of presenting this to you tonight is to provide an overview, kind of just an update on where we're at, and also to provide the board with a recommendation for them to approve it next week. So in order to apply for grants through the Michigan DNR, we have to get an approval by the Board of Trustees, and we have to submit that to them. And the Board of Trustees meeting is on the 26th. Planning Commission approval or adoption isn't required, but it is great to have that when we do submit our packet to the DNR. It just, you know, it shows them that everyone is on board. We've all looked at the plan and things like that. So with that being said, I will share my screen. There we go, okay. Can everybody see that? I just want to make sure before I start.
Yeah.
Perfect. Just move this. Okay, so the purpose of a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, like I said, it's required in order to be eligible to apply for those recreation grants through the Michigan DNR. These really provide critical funding for things like park acquisition and recreation improvement projects. The township must file an approved five-year updated plan with the MDNR by February 1st in order to be eligible for these grants. So just a little overview of the sections of the plan. The DNR basically lays out specifically what they would like to see in the plan. And the way that McKenna does it is that we follow that, and we make sure to include each section that they request. So those sections are, first, the community snapshot. This kind of provides, you know, demographics and things that shape the community and things that describe the Northfield Township community. The next section is the inventory and analysis of the existing facilities and natural resources. So that is a synopsis of what is already existing within the township, as well as within the region. The next is the meat of the plan, which is a community vision, goals, and objectives. These goals and objectives were created via the online survey that we did using the results from the community members, as well as from board member input and Parks and Recreation Subcommittee input as well. Then the action plan. And this includes, basically, how we can fund these projects and a prioritization by year of each project. So for the public engagement, we did an online survey, and we received 200, well, we actually received about 300 responses. But in order to mitigate duplicate responses from the same person, we made it a requirement that everybody who submits a survey response gives their name and address. And if the person didn't answer that question, we put it in the disclaimer that that survey would be thrown out. So after going through and removing those duplicate submissions, we had 225 respondents. So it was a pretty good response rate and turnout. So from that survey, we gathered five major themes that the community gave us in order to guide the plan. And those are natural features preservation, lakefront access, connectivity, safety, walkability, fiscal conservation, and township pride for assets and resources in recreation. Within the action plan of the plan, we created five priority projects. And these are things that we wanted to focus on doing in the near future. So in a second, when I pull up the actual plan, I have a link in here that will take us to it. But there is a chart that says a timeline of when we would like to do these projects, or if they're long-term, midterm, or short-term. And the top five priority projects are mainly what we want to do within the next, within the next year or three years. So creating a more organized volunteer system and database. We did get a really high response rate back from the public, saying that a lot of people would like to volunteer. The second would be collaborating on the park design and project plan for the Northfield Township Community Park. The third was begin development of the Northfield Township Community Park based upon the park design and project plan. And then we kind of listed some of the features that would be included. Fourth is to create a border-to-border loop trail linking the trails surrounding the North Village site to the Mike Levine Lakelands Trail State Park. And fifth is to create a riverwalk along Horseshoe Lake Drain. And this would be from the Jennings Athletic Complex to Barker Road, which would link the trail that surrounds the North Village site. Okay, so now I'm going to take us to the actual plan. Can you, can you guys see the link that came up now, or is it still on the PowerPoint?
No, it's stopped.
It's up, okay. Okay, cool. So I wanted to bring this up just as a, just a way to kind of show the graphics of the plan. I know that, you know, it's been on the website, so you guys have probably already seen it. But I figured, since I was going to touch on the action plan anyhow, I would kind of just scroll through, just for you guys to get a feel of the plan. Early on in the process, just as a sidebar, the Parks and Recreation Board really wanted to create a document that visually looked like the master plan and the North Village plan, just so Northfield Township had some consistency in the look of their documents, which I think is a really nice, was a really good call by them. So just kind of scrolling through here, we did get a lot of nice pictures in from commissioners and board members. And then, once I get to the action plan, I'll kind of touch on that. So goals and objectives here, that's definitely part of the meat of the plan. Okay, so we talked about the top five priority projects here. And then below is a table for the action plan. With this, we included timeframe, about how much it would cost for that project, and then possible collaboration and funding sources. So in here, we kind of split it up by long-term, midterm, and then near-term, and put, you know, funding sources and things like that as well. So that's kind of the meat of the plan. And then if you go down here, this is where we get into the description of each of those projects.
Natalie, not to interrupt you, but is everybody seeing the plan that Natalie is talking about? Because I'm just seeing the PowerPoint slide still.
Just seeing the link.
Okay.
Oh, no!
It's okay.
Oh, no!
I think there was a little confusion by saying it's still up. I was like, do we mean the plan or the link? Yeah, so you might just have to-
Thank you, I thought it was just me.
No, you might just have to stop sharing the screen and start sharing the other one. We'll get on track.
I didn't, I didn't know. All right. Okay, let me just stop sharing again.
Yeah, if you share your, the screen and not an individual tab, you should be able to seamlessly switch.
No, that entire time. Okay, I'll just, I will shorten that a lot. But the point that I wanted to make by going to this plan is kind of just showing off the aesthetics of the plan. So I'm just going to now quickly scroll through, so I don't have you guys sitting here. But what I was doing was scrolling, like actively scrolling through this until I got to the action plan section. And then, when I got to the action plan section, that was what I was explaining. So I'll show you that here. So sorry about that, guys. It probably made no sense. Okay, so when I was talking about the chart for the action plan, this is, this is what it was right here. So we have all the projects listed, and then we have the timeframes along with the cost and the possible collaboration and funding sources. So if, I mean, if you want to look in more closely to this, it's online. It's available for everyone to look at and comment on. But, but I just kind of wanted to touch on this, because this is the meat of the plan. And then below it, these are the project descriptions for each specific thing. So with that being said... Okay, is it back to the presentation now, just to make sure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just have to maximize it.
Okay, so I also wanted to provide a timeline, just because there's a lot of dates that we have to hit with Parks and Recreation plans, because we have to keep in mind we are on the DNR's timeline, since it does have to be submitted to them by February 1st. But just some main, main dates that I'll touch on. The 27th, we posted it online for public comment, so it has been available. We've received a lot of great comments from board members, commissioners, and Subcommittee members. We've implemented those into the plan. Today, we're presenting the final draft to you guys. And then tomorrow, I'm presenting the final draft to the Parks Board. The DNR does require approval of the plan by the Parks Board as well. And then on the 28th, or I'm sorry, it's the 26th, we'll present the final version of the plan to the Board of Trustees for their approval. And then February 1st, we do have to submit to the DNR. So just to reiterate the reason that we're presenting this to you tonight. So usually, it's, it's a good idea to have a motion from the Planning Commission to recommend to the Board of Trustees that they should adopt the plan. You can, you can make this on the premises that comments can be incorporated up until the 26th, because that is the day that the board meeting is on. But we can also still make edits after that until we submit to the DNR. And I just wanted to point out, any comments we received after January 14th, which was this past Friday, that will be added before the Parks Board has to adopt tomorrow night. And that way, we'll have mostly everyone's, you know, last-minute edits and comments in there before they do accept it for approval. Thank you. Okay, I stopped straight, Chair. Yes. Mr. Iquinto?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the adoption of the Parks and Rec Plan to the Board of Trustees from the Planning Commission.
I'll support, but I have a question.
I have questions.
Yes, definitely.
Edit it.
That's fine. We have, we have a motion seconded by Ms. Chick. And we can go to questions or comments on the motion. So who would like to go first?
Go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
Can I ask Natalie some general questions about funding? Are all these projects tailored that they will be eligible for funding? And is funding typically capped at a percentage, or is there a match? Or where does, in general terms, the money come from for these?
For the second part of your question, there's different grants that the MDNR issues. There's, there's not just one. I'm not entirely sure how many there are. But there's, there's multiple different grants that can be awarded to, like, different communities, and you can get a certain percentage of that. Each project is tailored in order to be acceptable by at least, you know, one or some of those grants, and they are focused primarily on recreation. So they would be, they would be deemed acceptable by the DNR, but that's not to say that, you know, the township would get that grant or wouldn't get that grant.
I can answer that as well. So just as like the streetscape, the sidewalk grant that we received, we had to have an approved Parks and Rec Plan that was dated properly and accepted by the DNR. And that was not a DNR grant, but that was an independent grant. So even independent grants require a active, and I say active because they're good for five years, just like our master plan. They, they require an active, DNR-approved Parks and Rec Plan. And so then, that gives us the opportunity to be able to apply for many different grants that are out there, that are matching, that are fully funded, so they are, they are all variable.
Mr. Dwyer, any other questions?
No, thank you.
I believe Ms. Infante had questions.
My worry about funding also, I think this is a great plan, actually. And, and it shows enormous work and enthusiasm. It could definitely use some editing in terms of punctuation and a lot of redundancy. But in terms of the meat, it's very attractive. My question is, and maybe this isn't one for you so much, maybe as it is for Janet, but there's a repetition throughout that the township should pay for all of these, whether it's amenities or modifications, with private grants, maybe the DNR grants. I mean, is there no such thing as a county Parks and Rec village? I remember living in Fort Grashit, which is not a wealthy environment, community at all, similar to the demographics at the top of this document. And they've got a wonderful park, 30 acres. Everyone uses it all the time. And it is fully supported by St. Clair County Parks and Rec Village. So I guess that's my ignorant question, because I do- So I guess that's my ignorant question because I do see funding as a real challenge here and obviously get this, you know, get this plan in immediately so that you can start applying for those, those monies. But is there, is there nothing available in terms of village? We don't have anything set up?
Ms. Chick?
When you look through the plan and you, and they do provide funding sources in there, there are several funding sources for each one of the activities. With grants, typically there is a match. It can be, there are some with no match, but typically there is a match. It could be 10%, 35%, 50%. You don't know until, you know, you go out for that kind of grant. And then that match would come out of the general fund. There's also private donations that can come from corporations or businesses in the township where people can donate. The township cannot solicit for donations, but those companies or businesses or whoever can donate on their own towards it. And yes, a village is always an option and depending on, you know, the cost. And actually, if you look at the North Village Master Plan on page 27 of that plan, it actually lists some costs that were estimated back in 2017 for like the pavilion, for the gazebo, for the grass, for the landscaping. Those numbers are available, they're probably all different now, but it does give you an idea how much it would actually cost to develop the park area and have some of the amenities that are, that the people are asking for. But yeah, it's, it's not free. It's going to take some work to get it up to where a level that the people have been asking for. It probably will have to be done in phases, I'm expecting. I don't know, I'm not on the Park and Rec, but I'm thinking that, you know, Mr. Iquinto can probably help you with that, but there are multiple funding sources if we go out for them, and a village is one.
So we, as a Parks and Rec Board, have discussed asking the Township Board to go out for a village for Parks and Rec purposes. And I believe this year with the new board in place, that we will go ahead and do so because this way we will know that the community is 100% behind it if a village does pass, and that is a great funding source as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions, comments?
Actually, I had another comment if I might. Okay, my, my only concern about the Planning Commission recommending it at this point is that you're telling us that there's going to be comments and changes to the plan after we approve it, and the concern is, we don't know what those are, and what if it's something that we have an issue with?
My motion was to recommend to the Board for adoption. We don't, we don't recommend for approval, we just recommend for adoption.
Yeah, and if, if I could just jump in, the only two things that we're going to add in before we need approval from the Parks Board and the Board of Trustees, unless we get any other comments, you know, from commissioners or board members, is two documents from one of the Board of Trustees. And one of those documents is a Strategies to Funding. And this is kind of a summary of what specific grants are available through the M D N R. So it's a synopsis of that. And then state recreation trends. So those are the two things that one of the trustees sent over, I think, Friday or this weekend. So anything, you know, beyond that, I, I, I don't know of yet, but those are the only two things that we have on the agenda to add.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, no, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Iquinto, can you state that one again?
Yes, sir. My motion was to recommend for approval to the Township Board, the Parks and Rec Plan.
So no other questions? I'm sorry, no, no other questions, comments on that motion? Seeing none, we'll go to roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Mr. Gustafson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Zarzaki? Yes. Seven, zero approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bond.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll go to the Zoning Administrator's Quarterly Report. Ms. Conneke?
Thank you, Chair. So as most of you, except for maybe Mr. Gustafson, know, we present the Zoning Administrators a quarterly report to the Planning Commission. It's just a quick overview of the document, I'm not going to go through it in too much detail. It just gives you a good sense for the work that the zoning administrator is doing, which complements the work of the Planning Commission from the administrative side. So for the last quarter of the year, a total of 15 zoning compliance applications were approved. Most of the applications that come in for zoning compliance are smaller projects like fences and new dwellings, pole barns, and, and things like that. Five applications, however, were approved for non-residential use or multiple family use. Just to put a fine pin in it, for those that do not know, these are applications that would not otherwise require Planning Commission review because there's no change of use, the proposed action is small enough that it can be reviewed administratively, things like that. There were five applications denied this quarter. As Ms. Krishnan notes in her report, these were for fences, a pole barn, a sign in a new dwelling, and they were denied for lack of compliance with ordinance requirements or inaccurate measurements. There were no administrative site plan approvals this quarter. And one zoning Board of Appeals case, this was for Terra Firma, which came back to the Planning Commission for a final site plan approval following that DDA decision. There were also no final site inspections, which is another thing that falls under the zoning administrators' purview. Vidya has also provided another update for the Planning Commission regarding her continued service to the township. As you know, she has not been physically in the office for her office hours since March of last year, but continues to provide the same level of service to the township as she always has. And communicates regularly with Mary, Mary Byrd, our planning coordinator and township building official and code enforcement officer as needed. So that's, that's Vidya's report this quarter.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. Anyone have questions, comments on the report? I have a, I have a quick, two questions, Ms. Conneke, and perhaps if you can answer, maybe Ms. Byrd can. The 240 Barker, is that, is, that's still the same owner of 240 Barker?
The firearms one?
Just a different business in the same facility? Am I correct?
I do not know the answer to that, perhaps Mary does.
Thank you. Ms. Byrd?
That is a lease. Could turn into a sale, but right now it's a lease, I believe.
Okay, and so what, I guess what's the current status of that? Is, is it in the process of being done? It's not open yet, apparently? Am I correct? Ms. Byrd?
It's not open yet, sir.
Thank you. And the same, same with 6542 Whitmore Lake Road, is that the same person that came before the Planning Commission in the past for an issue, an item? Perhaps Ms. Conneke wouldn't know, Ms., maybe Ms. Byrd?
I can always look into that and follow up with you.
That's fine. That's all I have. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes from January 6th and dispense with reading.
Port.
Ported by Mr. Iquinto, any questions, comments, or corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Final call to the public, Ms. Conneke?
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we'll have our final call to the public for items both on and off the agenda. Should you wish to address the Planning Commission at this time, please use the raise hand function and wait for me to call on you in order to give your comment. I see a couple of hands raised, but before I go to those, there were a couple of questions and comments that came in through the Q and A that I'd like to just read out. The first is from Adam Olney. Does the Downtown Planning Group still exist or would this be the DDA? My understanding is that they're one and the same.
I could probably answer a little bit about that. The Downtown Planning Group is a subsection of the DDA who worked particularly on that plan. So yeah, basically one and the same.
Great. And then another comment, could the current North Village Master Plan be used to apply for some of the same grants? You could, but really having the official Parks and Recreation Master Plan on file is essential towards getting a lot of different grants, even though that document is probably a really good supplement to have in hand, especially for those grants that need you to be a little bit further along in the, the planning and concept phase. Right. So I see Steve Grono. I'm going to allow you to talk. Who's muted?
Can you hear me? Okay, thanks so much. I'll just be brief. I'm, this is just an introduction, as Julie mentioned, I might be the one that she was referring to about a project coming up before you soon. And I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Steve Grono from Chestnut Development. 100% of my projects over the last 30 years have been in Livingston County, so I don't know any of you in Wash, in Wash, well, in Northfield Township. And I just wanted to let you know who I am. If anyone wants to Google me a little bit and check me out a little bit before the, before my project comes before you, you can feel free to take a look at Chestnut Home Builders or Chestnut Development or myself, Steve Grono, and there's lots of information there through our website and various other Google things. The project you may want to look at is called Chestnut Crossing. There is a website for that, and, and I would invite any of you prior to our proposals being reviewed to visit our project there on Burt Cart Road and Mason Road in Howell. And what we're proposing, a large portion of it, is the same, same project that you'll see there, which we built two years ago. So that's it. I just wanted to say hi and let you know who I was and what was coming up, and look forward to working with all of you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It does not look like any other member of the public wishes to address the Planning Commission at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. I'll go now to comments from commissioners, we'll begin with Ms. Infante.
None, thank you.
Mr. Dwyer?
Just welcome Scott. I have to warn you, we're not always this quick, so be prepared.
No problem.
Although we try. Ms. Chick?
Actually, yes, welcome, Scott. We're happy to have you. Also, I'm happy about the master plan for the Parks and Rec. I've read through it a number of times and it's, it's a good plan. Also, Ms. Conneke, or Conneke, I'm sorry, I say your name wrong every single time. Where are we at with the development packet and the code enforcement ordinance?
Sure, so the code enforcement ordinance, oh, you might have not been here during my consultant update on that. So that's been, all of the edits from the Planning Commission have been incorporated, and I've sent that draft along with a couple of your questions to the Township Attorney for review. I've given him a deadline that I hope we can have it back in front of you for discussion at your next meeting, but it'll be based on his timeline. The development packet was sent to Mary and the Township Manager and several others back in December. I resent it this week with the hope that we would all get together to discuss it and assess provisions. And then hopefully move on to a Phase Two of that effort to incorporate revisions and update your applications and make recommendations about any changes that might need to be made to the ordinance to bring those two things together.
Okay.
But it's substantially, in a, I think it's in a good spot where we could hopefully wrap this up shortly.
All right, yeah, that's the one that the Board and the DDA is most anxious to see, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gus, Gustafson? Sorry.
No problem. I don't have anything to add right now, and thank you, everybody, for the warm welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki? You're muted, Mr. Zarzaki.
Just welcome to Scott, and hopefully we get this package of the changes to the, you know, code enforcement going as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Iquinto?
Yes, I'm glad the Board renewed Mr. Zarzaki's service to the PC. Thank you, John, for continuing to serve, and welcome, Scott. Thank you for deciding to be part of the PC.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I did owe Mr. Iquinto's comments, so the next regular meeting will be February 3rd, 2021, and I make motion to adjourn. Ported by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions, comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good meeting.
Thank you. Everybody.
Good night.
Scott, are you any relation to the famous teacher?
I don't think so.
Okay, she taught, I think she's retired by now, but she taught here for at least two decades, including my kids. So same last name, which is why I will pronounce it correctly.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're here.
I grew up near Chicago, so I don't have much family in this area, except my younger brother.
Well, it sounds like you're bringing amazing skills to our committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mary, the recording has stopped, so we are okay to stop the meeting. Have a good night.